We don't all have copies of that.
You do.
I just got this.
Oh, okay. So I'm...
I thought we did, I thought.
I'll make...
No.
It's this.
Yeah, I still have two more.
Well, some of us are retired and some of us do volunteer a lot. Sometimes we like to take trips out of town.
Sure.
And but as long as I know that there's a consent connected with this thing, I don't have a problem. So if Judy and I decide we want to go to Florida for two months, and if I get your permission to do that, then it's going to be okay, right?
Yes.
Sixty days, yeah.
Yeah.
But then you can say you don't want me to go, and then that's another discussion. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know.
All right. We're going to send you away for a hundred days.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be Mexico, it could be South Africa, I don't know.
Maybe Jerome was next on that.
Oh, no, I'm just listening right now. I, uh, I mean, I think we, I think we're more or less of one mind with the spirit of what we're trying to do here, okay? How you word it so it can't be interpreted another way by some future council is, is probably the difficult part of this. So the spirit of what we're trying to say is, is you need to be, A, a resident of Deepo Bay for a year previously to run for office, okay? And that you need to be a resident of Deepo Bay while you're in office and a registered voter on the city. And that if you're going to leave for thirty days or more, you need to get the consent of the council. You need to give notice, give a basic notice that you're going to be gone. And, and see, none of these are over the top because if you don't like it, you can always resign. I could always resign, or somebody else could resign and say, you know, goodbye. So I don't think that's unreasonable either. And so, um, then, um, if you, I mean, the one thing that if, if you move to a nearby municipality or out in the county outside of a municipality, not inside of Deepo Bay, and you've got some part of your term left, then I think that that would, but maybe you're still registered to vote in Deepo Bay, that happens. I don't, I don't know what kind of wording we have in there, the COVID Act. Joe?
Well, that's what I wanted to find out. Robert, was there any, is there anything in there that says that a city council person must maintain a full-time residence?
It doesn't say full-time.
Okay, maybe we should look at putting that in there because the way that I'm reading this, absence from, absent from the city, an absence from the city in my interpretation is, well, on vacation, but it's intending to return. What I think might possibly be comprehensive enough to cover that is saying that you, that a councilperson must maintain a full-time permanent or primary residence in the city of Deepo Bay during the term of their, their office. And that if they need to be gone for any longer than thirty days, that there should be a time limit. There should be, there should be some sort of a limit in saying, okay, if there's some sort of family disaster, we need to go to Portland, for instance, or wherever, you can do that, but at the end of thirty days, or sixty days, or however long, we're going to revisit this and you must be in compliance at, at that time.
If you'll take the, first of all, these charters are written by the state government. These are written by somebody back in Salem, I assume, and then they pass them out to all the different cities. Because if you look at the charters from city to city, they're very much similar, in fact, identical, except for some parts. And if you take a look, keep that in mind, that most cities are on the same page as we are. If you take on page two, look at Yahats. On item number three, as you go down the list, it says, ceasing, ceasing to reside in the city. If you go to Manzanita, which this would be about the fifth or sixth line down, it says, removal of residency from the city. If you then turn the page into the Walport, you're going to see, removal of residency from the city. If you go to Lincoln City, it says termination of residency in city. Then it also says termination of a council member's principal residence in the area he or she represents. And then if you go to Newport, it says ceasing to reside in the city. That's item number three. It's about a third of the way down the page. And you look at the front spreadsheet that Perry put together for us, every one of those cities, what I just mentioned, is the X they're talking about on this spreadsheet. And it looks like our sister cities, and I'm not aware of our sister cities having some of the same difficulties that we've had in the city for the last, on and off, at least for the last few years. I would think we should look towards what our sister cities are doing because our charter already has the stipulation like you're talking about, Jerome, about if you're going to be away, or Steve, if you're going to be away, the city council can make an exception for that as long as you communicate with the city. There is that already in our charter. So my thinking on this is the simpler, the better. The less said, the cleaner. There's always going to be interpretations of the charter, and that's what just happened to our city and what we just went through. But adding those few words, ceasing to reside in the city, removal of residency from the city, which is done over and over and over again by our sister city, seems to be a pretty safe course. At, I'm almost done, Robert. At the end of the day, whatever we decide here tonight, it's going to be by resolution. And we're not necessarily going to write the language to this tonight. We're going to make a consensus vote through resolution that this is something we are seriously interested in doing to see it on the May nineteenth ballot. And before we do anything as far as that goes, we have to do a resolution saying we agree that we need to tighten up the residency by whatever means, and then we need to pass it by our attorney. And the attorney right now is the attorney Eugene. And although we are looking for an alternate law firm to represent us, at this time, we do have a law firm that does represent us. So whether Eugene or the next group of attorneys that represent us, either one can take care of the cleaning up of the language. And I think that, at the end of the day, is where the language needs to be part, is with the attorney. We just need to agree in public that we are doing a resolution to make this happen.
My concern, the reason I thought about this and did some writing on it, is because, first of all, Joe, there's a huge difference between a residence and residency. A residence means you own a home. You might live in Hawaii, but if you own a home here, you own a residence. Doesn't mean you're residing in the city. So it needs to say that permanent resident residing, personally residing in the city in some way. This event that we had, as Eve pointed and we said many times, was extremely ugly. And I don't want, I wouldn't want, wish any city to go through that. If we, whatever we can do to make it higher and cladder, I think we owe it to everyone to do that, including ourselves.
Would it be appropriate then, you have to make a motion at this time?
One, yes, we hold that thought. No, in our charter, it also states that within, it's to be interpreted within the intent of the state constitution. And that is the most important verbiage in, in our charter. I really think they had it in mind, but we're, you know, we're just stumbling over a few words to really put some teeth in it, you know? Instead of making a paper tie, you know, we've got a bingle tie here. So, yes, go ahead with your...
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we amend the charter to add those five words and have the city attorney vet that thoroughly and add that to the city charter as a permanent amendment.
I'll second that.
May I second it anymore? Go ahead, Joe.
Joe, can I make a friendly amendment to your...
Well, of course you can.
Would be, take the five words out of there to eliminate, not limiting the language to five words, or, you know, either way, it could be shorter or greater, whatever our attorney recommends would be the best way to resolve this matter. And in the spirit of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to indicate, but I think you said it better.
Yeah.
So I've settled.
Then I will resecond that.
So what's the, Perry, can you read the motion?
Um, you know, I'm sorry, I can't. First part.
Neither.
That we, that we amend the charter to add those five words, and I got attorney vet that, and I'm...
So have the attorney thoroughly vetted?
Was it? I thought there was...
And then added, then added, as a permanent amendment to the charter.
Thank you.
To amend the verbiage to achieve our goal, that could be simpler than that.
Excuse me, I think you want to define residency.
I think we're going to have the attorney in the...
Yeah, that's the question, is defining.
I forgot to read an addition that I thought, just for that purpose, in the same section twelve qualifications of officers after talks about being permanent resident and throughout his term of office, then an addition that I would suggest is permanent residency is defined as occupying residence, occupying their residence within the city, excluding not more than a total of thirty days of absence in any combination.
Good definition.
Yeah.
Can that, can you put the definition in a charter section?
I don't think I can say that. You're writing, picking apart.
Joe, no.
If, if, if you're ready, if you call the roll on the motion to see if it passes, and then, and I have a question. If you guys are ready.
So, everybody agree on this? So the motion isn't, in more discussion, I'm sorry. The motion isn't necessarily stringent wording, right?
Well, the original motion was to, that we amend the charter to add those five words, and attorney thoroughly vet that, and add it as a permanent amendment to the charter. Then the motion was amended that it would, we take out those five words, so it would not be limited to five words.
So what were those five words?
They're in your report.
Ceasing to reside in the city, unless you reside in the city? Okay. Yeah. Okay. So we're not fining it right now, or, or, I hope you're...
We're just putting in a motion.
And I'd certainly be happy to let you have this, if you'd like to get to the charter.
All right, so if we're in accordance, call please.
Magala?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Spartans?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Absolutely.
Now, if I may ask my question, you all got copy of this little rule here?
Oh, yeah.
The Howdy City District Return Manual. On page nine, now, by adoption of that motion, you are directing that the process we are going to be using is the governing body does not prepare the ballot title because it's going to go to the city attorney. Anyway, so it says that the governing body begins the process by filing with the city elections official text of the major. The way you will do that is at the next regular meeting, we'll draft up a resolution which will have your text of the major. And if, once you adopt that, then the very next step is, then the city elections official forwards your text to the city attorney, and that starts the clock ticking. There's a seven-day challenge period, we have to publish notice, et cetera. So we've got a lot of good ideas, so I, I, you want to try to nail down the text of the major tonight. Mr. Gambino has brought up section twelve, section thirty-one, and we've discussed section thirty-two amendments. So we're going to have to somehow nail down the wording.
You know what, can I take on this? Well, you know, simpler is better, and I get what you're doing there, Robert. When we go to the public, because the public's going to decide this, this is not our decision. If we have too many things there, I'm afraid it might confuse the issue. I worry about that, and I, it's not taking anything away from your work. I just, I, I just see it wanting to, because when it, when it comes out, there's going to be, you know, the ballot and the, or the little handbook, and it's going to say, a text amendment to the city charter, yada, 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 this is a text amendment. And I'm thinking that if we keep it really simple, it makes it more likely that it's not going to confuse some of the voters. That's, that's what I worry about. And it's not that what you're doing is not right, it's not germane.
No, I understand. Why don't, why don't, well, suggestion, somebody trim this down so it has the same intent in it, or however you want to...
Okay, so when it gets to the attorney, then all that'll be learned.
Yeah.
I just want one clarification, because this is on my mind, previous to this, is that, the paragraph here, and the last sentence of paragraph that's existing, it says, "The council shall be the final judge of qualifications and election of its own members." Now, that seems rather subjective to me. In other words, is that going to, are we bound by the city charter and the laws and, and regulations of the state of Oregon when, by that? Or can we be subjective and supersede any qualification? Because it says the council shall be the final judge of qualifications and elections and, and elections of its own members.
Talk to Brent Barry.
Yes, to both. You must abide by the constitution, the state constitution, but you also have leeway.
The city has exercised that option before, Jerome.
As long as you're not challenged in court by, and you lose.
So the, could the, could the council, in some, in some instance, waive the residency requirements?
I don't think that would be in the best interest of anybody.
No, it wouldn't, but he's, he's asking legally, technically.
I mean, if that happened. I think the answer is yes.
Well, let's see, your house burnt down. You had to move to, then there was a place to rent in Newport.
Move within the city.
You would have to move within the city? I mean, that could happen, correct?
Well, again, I don't have the permission, but, again, I mean, to be real here, if you got to move out to the Deepo Bay for one reason or another, no harm, go foul, resign.
Correct.
Simple.
Yeah, that's the way I see it. Simple.
So how do we want to do this?
If I might, I believe Ms. Fisher Brown's motion, the original one, where you said add those five words, you meant ceasing to reside in the city, or...
Yeah, some.
Yes.
If that's, if that's all the council wants to do, is, is that, that would be the amendment to the city charter, is to add that to section thirty-two of our city charter as one of the reasons that a vacancy is created, then we'll run with that. But like I say, I'm hearing different sections being referred to, so, so for the council, for drafting the resolution, to, to call for an election, to place this on the ballot, you should identify which sections of the charter you're going to be amending and what the amending, what wording would be. So if, based on the motion, we could, but it was amended to not limit it to the five words, so that's kind of where I'm stuck. I'm sorry.
But, but this, this is becoming a bit complicated when it's not even done. I mean, we have to have the attorney look at it, and there has to be some more.
But the attorney needs to know what the council wants to do.
Before, the attorney has to be registered with the election, election office, with the text. So we have to have some text personally.
Sure, but advocate simpler here.
I really have to agree with you on that. The, I mean, I don't really think that it requires any more than the addition of those five particular words. And, you know, then it would go into intent, but I think the intent is obvious, so I think that, as you said, simpler is better. So I think we should just go ahead and skip with that for now and see what the attorney says. And then I suppose it would be up until revision at a later time if he says, no, you can't do that, you have to do this, or whatever.
Like I say, we'll work on drafting a resolution to bring that to you at the very next council meeting. So wherever you guys want to, want to go with giving direction of what, what to put in that resolution to do that.
That sounds like a plan. I'm fine with the five or six words, whatever, but I guess I'm still stuck on this, is if this clause is in here, "The council shall be a judge of the qualifications and election of its own members," then if, as long as that remains, okay, you're going, you could find yourself in the same position.
Yeah.
I mean, because if a councilperson even wants to argue this point, and he's got, he or she has enough quorum on the, on the council, even if they're outside the, the scope of the spirit of what we're trying to do here, the votes will keep them in because of that clause in the charter.
Not rebutting what you're saying, Jerome, but each and every city charter has that particular clause, as I'm aware of, in there already. We're not, we wouldn't be the only one with this clause. Perry shaking her head here. I don't believe we're the only one with the clause about making the city council a final arbiter of a person's qualification.
I mean, just to certify the elections on that.
I actually, I actually get what you're saying. I do, and actually, I don't want to go there. I, I think that if we nail it down so tight that we might have trouble finding somebody to serve. I mean, there's that, that problem too, if you make it so tight.
Yes, and I believe there's another reason for that in there. I don't, I don't know that it's so appropriate having it in that section, but it should be in there, and that is, "The council shall have, shall have final judge." Let's just take that. That's in the spirit of parliamentary rule. I mean, that's, that's why we're here, you know, is to make decisions that may be personal.
Robert, what if you were to direct staff to use those five words, but then send your text then along to the attorney and receive this feedback on that? Would that be okay?
With, with the mention that the council was concerned about keeping it a little simpler to not scare off anyone.
Yes, maybe we go to the attorney with the five words, or whatever the wording is.
I'm down with that, but Mayor and Robert, you've heard that term, "We're a nation of laws, not men," okay? Those words make this, these decisions subjective. It makes it a pen, not laws. And it goes against the spirit, I believe, of, of our county fathers, really. In other words, if, if it was added on there within the laws and the charter and the regulations, the, you know, about being bound by those things, "The, the council shall be the final judge," I'm fine with that, but it doesn't put any restraints on us, you know? I mean, not in words. In other words, I think that this, the very thing, the incident that caused us to address this item is, 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 is that clause. That's the one that was used.
Okay, we're right back again to the intent of the constitution.
Yes.
We're right back at that same square.
But if you think it's going to, it's going to help clarify what we have, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go along with it.
Well, Jerome, I, I don't know if it's going to absolutely crystallize it, but it seems like our sister cities haven't gone through some of the same things we just went through. That's the one thing I do know. And I do know those words are the things that were listed on our charter. That, those two things I do know. Now, Perry's batting her eye there, saying, what are we talking about?
Ready?
Yes, you guys are going around and around, and again, let me reiterate, what you're trying to do is define the term resident and residency. What constitutes illegal residents far as the city charter is concerned? Why not just get that clarified? That would take care of most of your stuff and on top of what Jerome's pointing out.
The, the state defines it.
The state defines it.
The state defines resides.
And can the city just expand upon it?
It's rather a lengthy definition. I don't know what you would add to it, but...
Yeah, okay.
Do you still have time?
So, not to get all made up to you, let's, so what do we have for the motion there?
Well, the motion, as it was, the motion was to amend the charter, the city charter, to add wording, I'm going to paraphrase here because originally it was to add those five words, but then it was amended to strike that and to not limit it to five words, and have the attorney thoroughly vet and add it as a permanent amendment to the charter. So I think that, someone mentioned it just a little bit ago, send to the city attorney, here's a suggestion, send to the city attorney that where we're starting is to add, ceasing to reside in the city to section thirty-two. Also provide him with all of what has been presented to that, and see what...
Right, the different queries involved, and then make a decision.
Yeah, he, he, he's, we'll try to get him to under, he'll understand where you're coming from and what you're trying to accomplish, and so he may say, we should also be looking at section twelve.
Right, I think that's what I, good way to approach it.
If that's all right, we'll start there.
Do we need to have Joe read your motion to reflect that?
Yeah.
Or are you okay with what we have?
Are you guys okay with, with that? We'll just run with that, and if I need help, I'll holler before the next meeting.
And so this is some, just for the timing, this is something you'll present to the attorney immediately.
Absolutely.
And then we will definitely get a response from him for the February seventeenth...
We'll, we'll have to have, just because of the timing, give me just a second, move to that page. February twenty-seventh is the deadline. That's the eighty days before the election. That is when we have to have our ballot title for publication of our letters. Okay? So we have to have our ballot title. That's, there's a form in that packet, it's Form eight oh two, you have to, you have to post the question. What's the question you're going to ask the voters? And then you have to have a ballot title and then brief summary. So you, we have to have the wording nailed down before February twenty-seventh because that's when we have to publish the notice, and we have to have the wording for anybody to say, you, I'm going to challenge that. They have seven, a seventy-day window to challenge that. We could end up in circuit court. We don't want to do that, but it could happen. So that starts the, the clock ticking. That's February twenty-seventh, we've got to, we've got to have that wording. What's going to be about...
It's two, it's ten days. It's tight.
All right. So, I have a little one.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Could you call on that place? Perry, can we get you to call on that?
Well, if you would, if, if you would like to restate the motion to just clarify and revote, you're more than welcome to do that. Okay.
I'm fine with it.
So, as she said. All right, okay. All right, okay. Hunter D. Visius. Eric May, ready?
Yeah, Civil West Engineering. This is the proposal from Civil West Engineering Firm out of Houston, New York Board Office. Garrett Hallo is the lead engineer, is the president of Civil West. And he gave us this kind of scope of service proposal that is gonna entail a lot of what is needed on Coast Avenue. Down in the part where it says goal for the project, if everybody has a copy of this, explains pretty much what the layout is. It's, the project is to complete a pre-design report to develop a preliminary layout and design. You know, and it's gonna have the preliminary cost estimate and consists of the overall budget, recommendations for moving forward with the project. And in a nutshell, it kinda covers everything on here. It's gonna entail upgrading the water main, the definitely relocation of it, kinda handle the existing old water main that's there. And we'll address sanitary sewer. We're gonna address the, there is a few pressure sewer lines, but not too many. Most of the main sewer that comes from Salashan South, so we have that flow from the William Beach Sanitary District. A thousand gallons a minute, it gets even higher than that, but, you know, I and I, it's important. So some of that's gonna be in detail on this also. That hits us about Kent Street. Comes up from the harbor, the forest main is, is through here in front of Shell Station. And it'll carry that down Kent Street to Coast. And it'll be carrying our Coast Street to South Pointe. So that's about the only part that will contain the combined sewer. But we'll probably do it at phases, I would imagine, maybe, maybe not. It depends on what our cost comes around to. This will, will cover that. And I think this is a pretty good thorough proposal and I really like it. I like the work that Civil West and my team, they do a great job of their very good tech support. You know, over the phone, explain stuff to us, any questions?
Mr. Ray, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the engineering proposal to Civil West dated January nine for an amount of forty-nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
Any more discussion of that?
Yes.
Call please.
Well, no, Jerome wants to.
I just want to name.
I didn't see your name, Jerome.
That's all right. So I just wanted to get an, this is more or less coast, but this doesn't have anything to do with the STIP plan.
No.
Or does it? Okay. So from what Roy said, this is looking at fixing some infrastructure that's been degrading over some time. Streets and the sewer there on Coast Avenue.
Yeah.
And is it something that, I mean, besides the streets, is it, are, do you seriously think that the sewer needs to be redone there?
The sanitary sewer wouldn't have to be replaced, but if, if areas show with, with some of the TV work that we have done that there's some I and I and some infiltration issues, we can obviously do those with point repairs. And it's a lot cheaper to do slip line and stuff like that. So total sewer, sewer would not, sanitary sewer would not be that costly when it comes to this. But, so probably, most likely not. And you'll probably see in their scope that the sanitary sewer may be just some laroals from homes, things like that. But in as far as the main sewer, when the combined sewer shows up, definitely because it's gonna be enlarged. Right now it's fifteen inches and it needs to, to meet with the future. And if we're gonna do infrastructure on that side where we don't wanna dig it up again for many, many years, we're gonna wanna go to and for at the minimum, the false.
So will, Civil West, will they, when they do their cost estimate, do they include what the cost is to the city worker, for the city workers themselves that will be working, working on the job?
Uh, like helping out during the project?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and some of that exactly will be probably part of their estimate that comes to construction. And what the city's, because normally we won't be involved in the construction part, but we're definitely always involved in, in staging and organizing, you know, flag, circuit roads, things like that. But yeah, that.
So this will give us a roadmap, a plan, what the costs were, and then it will come back and through your filter to the, the city council again. If this work, we, it'll give us some priorities, a lot of prioritizing.
Right.
Everything, you know, what probably needs to be done first, second.
Two phases, like from now on, something to, like, maybe episode to Hawkins Street or something like that. Maybe do it in thirds. He can break it down in two phases.
Okay, I'm down with that.
Yeah. And it's, it's really.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you for your.
You bet. Call please.
Dan Beal?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Item B, mental health, is already called, is that how you say that?
Okay, I just see maybe the right.
Okay, please.
I'd just like to do a quick segue to this. Thank you for your patience, Valerie. Thank you. But I asked Valerie to come talk to us for a couple of minutes and it has everything to do with mental health. Can't we do more? And it's a state, the Oregon legislative initiative that we in the rural community need to focus on. So I've offered, based on my own experience with this issue, is to offer the lead a bit to help us address our needs in the city on the best, Valerie is a mental health professional, to come talk to us for a couple of minutes. Thank you, Valerie.
Thanks for the introduction. So I'd like to just like, I just moved here from Colorado with my family. We're new to the area we're settling in. I came from a rural area in Colorado. It's about thirteen thousand, this ranching community. And we have the, we address the same issues. How do we, how do we address mental health in rural areas where people are spread out? There's not as much funding. And what we, what we did creatively was we collaborated with local entities to develop service delivery models that could serve the community at a low cost. And it ended up being that these are highly effective models. They don't cost a lot of money. We can receive grant funding from state, federal, state and local initiatives or grants. Those can be diverted by contract to other agencies, five oh one C threes, to provide contracted services with even one, one to two individuals. I worked on a team with three people, supervisor and field coordinators, is what we're called, community care coordinators. We had phones and we had cards and we had backgrounds in mental health. We were able to reach over two hundred people within a six, within a six-month time period who may not have, otherwise had contact with somebody who could provide referrals, assessment, support within the community. And we're looking at issues like domestic violence, drug and alcohol abuse, mental illness, trauma-related illnesses, things that we're not seeing, that we don't identify in the community, but it is, it is ever-present in every one of our communities. So the reason I'm here today is to provide insight into this, if you'd like more information, to provide support to Mr. Sparks and his initiatives, and to let you know that there are models out there that we can access and utilize with the support of, of local governments and, and community members to move forward this agenda. It's, it's a top, it's a topic they're addressing legislatively. There is a concern because the statistics are rising. This is a fast growing industry, which isn't good news. But we have to find ways to creatively and inexpensively address these issues in our community and make them a priority. They, they add to the health and wellness of our community. They create a well-rounded environment. They create an environment where people want to come and live. I found out it runs next to a drug dealer. See, it's on my mind. It's something I experienced. It's something my children are exposed to. And I wanna be part of a healthy community that values and is able to identify these issues and, and make decisions for the better of the community. So, let's keep it short.
We have several folks who are willing to work with us and start this conversation and see where we go with it. And it could involve public-private partnership through five oh one C three, support Shangri-La might be one and there are others. But I think that the timing's right, the, the issue is on the table. And I think it would be a great thing for the city of Deepwater Bay to take, take this initiative and seriously. I'm, I really support moving forward with the conversation.
Yeah, I have to say I agree with you. I've had the, the privilege of taking advantage of services like that in, in previous incarnations in my life. And also, you know, some personal experience with family nervous for dealing with addiction and the issues that are surrounding that. And I know that that can, that can be a real problem in small communities. And all of the, all of the things that follow from that, with domestic violence and, you know, things of that nature. So yeah, I think that that's, you know, proactive move is, is better than a reactive move. I'm definitely with you on that.
You know, I think, I mean, if we could come up with some, some ideas going forward, community outreach, I'm all for it. I mean, ever since really, I mean, not just talking about emotional illnesses, but ever since the, the, all governments throughout the U.S. deinstitutionalized severely mentally ill and chronic mentally mentally ill. These people live around and among us. And so to be cognitive of that and/or, you know, there's some, a lot of emotional problems out there too. But if, if you come up with some, I could support some ideas going forward, absolutely. Thank you very much for taking the time. Thank you, Valerie. I'll be back in touch with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for your patience.
No worries.
I don't see, it's just sort of regressing here, just trying to get the best fuel prices for our harbor. So I imagine that just involves putting out an RFP to the different suppliers, is that?
If the council wishes to direct staff to, we can either put an advertisement in a newspaper, we can try to generate a list of suppliers and just mail directly or vote. My understanding is, is that we would just ask them for how much they would charge the city over their, that, that's what happened last time is, is they provided, we will charge you X number of cents over what we pay for the fuel. Is that kinda what you're thinking?
So this, the dramatic drop that oil took in the last couple of months, then along with the fluctuating crisis, this would really be in order then as far as saving the city money in the, in the fuel purchase?
It's been some time since we, we did this, when we went out for an RFP for fuel suppliers for the, the fuel tanks at the harbor.
So it might be a wise thing for us to put out some questions in the form of RFP. Go ahead, please.
Uh, Roy, I think Robert, oh, whoever's first.
We don't actually have a constant.
Cash paper, but I can't tell you.
We don't have a constant price per gallon that we pay. Doesn't it fluctuate with the market?
It absolutely fluctuates.
Okay, so it's the percentage we're talking about?
Well, right now the supplier charges us, whatever he's paying for, he charges us so many cents over. And so then we pay his fee and then we add our twenty cents and then we sell it. But yeah, it, it fluctuates.
And my question was, there can't be that many fuel suppliers that will service Deepwater, is that correct?
I, I honestly don't know.
Oh, I don't know either. I'm just, 'cause you said something about sending a letter out specifically to different vendors.
Um, that's part of the process, you know, depending on type.
'Cause then we're kind of expending it as opposed to waiting for, you know, advertising in the paper. I'm just thinking.
One of our Harvard commission people, Mike Bess, turned me onto that. And he works for a crane company. They're getting their fuel delivered out of Portland now at substantially lower price than what we're paying out in Toledo. And also another thing that struck me was that the suppliers of Portland apparently has a greater supply of non-ethanol fuel, which is what we use in our harbor rather than the ethanol that causes the main engine problems. So I, I guess the next step, I should get a hold of Mike Bess and find out that supplier's name and then supply that to you and then we can go from there?
Yeah, we're gonna generate a list of potential suppliers to, to send our requests to.
I'm, I'm not sure. Do we need a motion to, to put out an RFP for, for the seal? I'll, I'll make that, don't you?
I'll second that.
Call.
Grant?
Hi.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yep.
Natalie?
Yes.
Dan Beal?
Yes.
Okay, we need authorized rental expenses for the city day capital on the twenty-sixth of February. So far, Steve Sparks and myself. And I don't know if anybody else is interested in attending that or not. If you are, say yep.
What day is that? What day is it?
February twenty-sixth.
Uh, what day of the week is that?
It's a, can't see that's our Thursday?
I believe it is.
Thursday.
Is that the correct date? And you said what day is?
Yeah, what day of the week is it? Thursday. Yeah, I wish I could go, but unfortunately, yeah, can't make it.
Yeah, it'd be an overnight thing too.
Yeah, I really wish I could go. But unfortunately, I haven't, I, I got to work on some of those dates.
Okay. Anybody else? And so how much money do they need for the meeting?
Okay, there is a twenty dollar registration fee for each attendee. And so that would be forty dollars. Lodging for separate rooms, I didn't want to bump again. Separate rooms, lodging is, is two hundred and forty dollars. If, if Councilor Sparks and Mayor Natalie carpool, I would estimate the travel reimbursement, the mileage at about eighty-five dollars. No carpool, I would just double that. And then some money for meals because there's, there's, there might be evening meal. It says there's a legislative reception from four-thirty to six-thirty, but I don't think they're gonna feed you.
It's on the evening schedule.
So, you know, meal in the evening and a meal at night for both.
We have to be there before nine-thirty in the morning. We've got a meeting with Representative Delbert. And, and then it, the thing goes all day and then there's a kind of a party afterwards. And we're definitely not gonna be driving back. Now, the only other issue to this is that I may have a. Now, the only other issue to this is that I may have a prior obligation, and I don't know if it's going to happen or not yet, but I may have to go to Portland after the next day, so that would change my.
I'm going to have a ride home. So, I can, I can carpool there with you?
Yeah, we can do that.
And, but I don't have to, I have a ride home.
Okay.
My wife is going to come over there the next day and do some shopping and hang me up.
Well, that sounds like a problem.
So, that's not a problem, so we can save some money carpooling. If you don't mind me hanging out with you for a little bit there.
Well, let's see, it's only about an hour to have to sail, and my lady has a lot.
Okay, so with carpooling, for the lodging, the registration, and a couple of meals, no. Without the meals, with carpooling, just the mileage and the lodging and the registration, it comes up to $450. So, how much you got to leave?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize up to $550 for this trip, which will be the money for meals, for lodging, and for carpooling.
Second.
That was $550?
Yeah, just don't get really big. Good Carl's Jr. place.
So, they clarify that they will be sharing a bed? That's the one thing that I, I'm going to sleep with.
Thank God.
You both touched a little.
Call please.
Fisher Brown.
Yes.
Sparks.
Now, do I abstain on this?
No.
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Dan Neenow?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Item E, Propose Resolution Number 439, a resolution to establish an education and technology expense line item in the general fund budget. You want to go with that one?
Sure. We've discussed it, we've talked about it. I move that we adopt Resolution 439, a resolution to establish an education and technology expense line in the general fund budget.
Second.
Any more discussion of that?
No.
Call please.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Dan Neenow?
Yes.
Grant?
Hi.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
All right. Valerie, you told me you wanted to do items on the board.
Oh, I do. I have two correspondence items. One is an email from Ray Buider, Federal Relations. He's part of the Oregon Works Lobby there back in D.C. And he's providing information about a letter that was sent to Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works and the Director of the White House Office of Management and Budget asking that small ports be put back into President's budget. If you had a chance to look at this letter and all the signatories, you'll notice that we are included, city people included. Second item I have is a letter submitted by Fran Wolfher. And the letter's regarding squatters, and she's writing regarding her concerns related to that matter.
I read that.
And that's all the correspondence?
Was there, there was a request, was there to read that in the minutes?
I was, I was, that was mentioned to me, but I, I can't confirm it. I mean, I did not speak to the author of the letter, so I kind of heard it secondhand.
I didn't say it's related to. I need to comment on that. There's, there's two councilmen on the city council, but we both live in Little Watacope, so it's either Jerome?
There's three.
Three, no, but, but, no, I'm talking about males in the letter.
Well, councilmen can refer to female.
Yeah, well, okay, so there's three. So, between the three of us, we're accused of permitting squatters in the neighborhood. So, when I come home after vacation and I walk in my house and I see a squatter, that's okay with me, but it's not okay. So, I don't know who said that. I didn't say it. I don't know if Jerome said it or you said it, but I don't know where the accusation came from, because I don't remember any discussion about squatters, and that any of us here agreed about giving any kind of leeway for squatters. I, I don't remember the conversation, so I don't know how to respond to that. We don't?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just learning.
Okay, then I, we can make it public record, right?
It is, it is public record, absolutely. If, if they're, Mr. Dan Neenow, who, you said that?
She's my neighbor.
Okay, so she did ask for it to be written?
She asked me to have it, yeah.
Okay, so when, when a piece of correspondence comes to City Council with that request, it's up to the City Council whether we do it or not. So, it's up to you.
I get it.
Robert, did you make a promise?
I did not make a promise.
No.
No question. Okay. No, I didn't make a promise. And I wouldn't know, because it is my neighbor, so it's up to you.
In a minute.
I read it.
Okay.
I'm reading it. I read fast, so. Well, I can appreciate this, the author of this letter's passion and her opinions on the issue. I don't think that it would be constructive to have it written in the minutes. I certainly think we can take it under advisement, but it's, it's an opinion, and I think that all that's really necessary is that we take notice of it and, and we're, we're moving forward with it. But I don't think it's appropriate to put it in the minutes.
Okay. City staff report. Ready?
Valerie, go first.
Can I go first?
Why, certainly, yeah.
I'll be really, really fast. I have two things. The Transportation System Plan, Community Advisory Committee, we call them the CAP. Peggy Leoni has served on that committee as a representative for the city from the Planning Commission, and she has indicated that she would love to not do that anymore. Planning Commissioner Bob Lewis has indicated that he would happily volunteer to fill that spot. So, if that's okay with the City Council, we'll make that change to that advisory committee. That's all right. That okay with everyone?
Yeah, sure.
Well, I'm going to go, thank you, Peggy, for helping out.
Well, I said I backed him up if he needed help.
You're a real mess.
Thank you, Jerome.
Bob Lewis is a real gentleman.
Okay, real, I said it here real quick. The second thing is, at the last council meeting, CHAP was directed to put out an advertisement to get a request for proposals for city attorney. And there was four newspapers that the council identified to put the advertisement in. I have since learned that the Sheridan Sun has discontinued business as of like last June. They are referring anyone that would want to place a notice or an ad to either the News Register in McMenville or the Newbury Graphic. My question to the council tonight is, do you want to do either one of those?
It's out of District 10, isn't it?
District 10 was out of the limit, so let's just go with the ones we.
That's on my list, Ron.
Yeah, and McMenville has some circulation, and it's just north of District 10.
Right.
So, I don't know who's been taking their place there.
So, just run with the News Times, the Journal, Headlight Herald, and the Newsweek. Okay.
Right, and our website.
And the city's website, yeah. Okay, well, thank you. That will be running. First publication will be February 11th, second publication February 18th, and we will be closing it on March 4th.
Right. Does, the question, and there may not be an answer, does the Oregon Bar Association have a posting site where you can post an RFP from a city?
I'm not sure. I don't, don't know. If they do, is what?
Yeah, but the chances will grab.
Outside, yeah.
Yeah, because did you do that with the council of governments for whom we have now? Or the League Oregon Citizens, didn't you advertise in the magazine?
The last time we did this, we put a ad in the local focus, League Oregon Citizens.
Right, so that brought us somebody from Eugene, so.
Well, this time, the RFP will clearly state that the attorney or law firm must practice within the boundaries of District 10. We have to, if that was involved.
Real quick, one more.
You said.
Well, I was talking about February 11th. Just a reminder, that's that Joint Transportation System Plan joint meeting with the Planning Commission, 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Day of the week, is that?
My favorite. Or wait?
I was just asking.
It will be here. There's a regular Planning Commission meeting that starts at 6:00, they do, they've got a public hearing. Logistically, we could crunch the time to move everybody down to the community hospital. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to report that our, at our drinking water facility, our raw reservoir dam, if the councils are familiar with the raw reservoir, it's a three-acre reservoir that sits above the water treatment plant.
Is that where you took me?
I believe we went up there, yeah, the Urzen Dam. There's a dock that goes out.
Right, that's where you took me.
Right. It has a vandalism about, oh, probably 20, 25 years ago, and that caused the pipes that are used for overflow and controlling the gate, the sluice gate, to control the level of the dam. The backs were replaced, and it kind of had a quick fix, and we did some cleaning up of the reservoir at that time, cleaning the salt and whatnot. Now, what's occurring is we're having a caving underneath the dock area, and we're losing material, and we're getting a little bit of, quite a bit of water showing up on the other side of the dam. Nothing that's real, real serious and worth panicking about. But what I'd like to do is, I'm going to get a diver to inspect our sluice gate, start with that while the dam is closed. Now, the last time we opened the sluice gate, we had to go into it, get all birds and something like that pop in there, and then when we went to close it, it got hung up on that, and it actually had to completely drain. So, my thought is, this go around is to hire a diver, and I count on for $50 an hour, and it shouldn't take more than that to inspect this. And what I want to make sure is that the other side of the sluice gate is going to be okay to open. We have them take a quick look at it, make sure there's no big deadheads or anything around that's going to get in there when we open it. And then we'll be able to lower the level down, and then I'll be able to get in there with the operators and myself, and we'll inspect and see what's happening underneath the dock and why we're losing the amount of material down. There's big jetty rock, there's jaw running in there, it's all caving down inside. So, something's going on. We don't know if it's happening from when it was vandalized years ago, and that's all rotting away now, because it was old steel culvert and was replaced with plastic. So, maybe some of that was still in there. Maybe there's some voids that are caving in, and it might just be a quick fix to redam it. Anything that is real serious, we'll get an engineer on board, and I'll let the council know by the next meeting. But it's nothing serious at this point, but just want to let you know that if there's any rumor or anything that you guys are on board with what's happening. I'll keep everybody updated with the note results. I want to add and order a diver for that price of spray. It's a local guy, so, and he's certified because.
Well, through the process, would it be, are you concerned where your water is leaking out to?
Yeah, if that water shows.
Are you thought about, I mean, would it be beneficial to, of course, it must be an engineering thing, we use dye to find out where it was coming?
Yeah, we could use blue gray dye. But it, it may just be groundwater that we're seeing, because there is some groundwater just above that area that's been riposte, and that's just several feet to the west of there, there's groundwater that comes out anyway. So, we don't know if that's working its way through, and we're just hoping to get conclusions at this time. But definitely when we go do the research and look, yeah, well, that's a great, great idea. We have a nicer guy that we use in our sanitary, that's all blue gray and stuff, so. But we don't want pink water or green water, whatever we need. It's my scene in here. But we could, it also has designed drinking water, you know, would be the first. Okay, second thing, I'll try to be quick, is the point repair, we're going to move forward to some areas on Keene Avenue that are going to get re-slip line. I talked about slip line sewerings, we're getting price quotes from a contractor out of the valley, they come down here and they deploy. They're doing a lot of work for Lincoln City. We're going to get a really good price from them because of their working in the area. So, the tail end of their, their project in Lincoln City, we'll be able to come here and do point repairs, which are a budgeted item, there are areas that are identified through TBing the line. We took a camera down the sewer last year, they all just documented research. We know where the really bad INI is that's coming in, and it's water that's infiltrating into the sewer. And we're going to either slip line those areas or repair on the machinery that's non- excavation work. They go in, they do this all through the remote control, it's resealed, fluorid, and then they, they do an inspection afterwards. They can actually either go and seal a lateral to the home that water's pouring in and without disrupting the homes. It's really, it's really great technology. But we've used these folks before, and they're really, they're really great. So, we're moving forward with that, and so that's infrastructure repair for sewers. Really vital that we get all the water control we can, because we don't want to drip water. And the more we can keep out of the sewer, the better. It just drives the operators crazy to have to worry about little heavy rainy days to worry about this. And the last thing is, I'm able to utilize the superback trailer that the council approved for me. We have an area in Anchor Estates that it's in, and he is toward a driveway. He's the gentleman that had the fire hydrant in his front yard in a very small area without having to tear up Keene's driveway. We'll be able to excavate down to get to the valve that we need to seal off now. The hydrant's gone, we need to seal the valve off. So, that's removing the hydrant or tighter the valve, and then we'll put a blind ledge on that to seal it, and then it can be covered up in concrete and not worry about it. And the other, the other fire hydrant was up and running, and.
It was good.
Yeah, and it's fire department's on board, so we didn't really appreciate it, but they were really pushing for us to get that moved. So, that was everybody plus on there. Josh is happy. I guess if the chief's happy, everybody else down the line, town. Happy chief, happy town. So, that's it for our board.
Council comments?
I have one comment, which is that the OLCC has added more listening sessions in reference to implementation of retail sales and other things related to the new marijuana legalization issue. There's going to be one in Newport on Wednesday, March 11th, at 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And I of course hope that anybody who has questions, comments, issues, uncertainties, any of that nature that they participate in that, the more information you get, the better it's going to be. And that's all I have.
I have a quick suggestion and a comment. The suggestion is to put a new static agenda item on the list called Lessons Learned, and here's why. It took at least a year, if not more, for a formal complaint about the Whale Inn to get into City Hall. The town citizens, many citizens, business owners complained about the abandoned motel for a long time, and I checked in, I did my own investigation on this, but they. Uh, the town citizens, many citizens, business owners complained about the abandoned motel for a long time, and I checked in, I did my own investigation on this, but, uh, but it wasn't until the formal complaint was filed, until we're, then we were able to get the owner to do something to secure it. The question is, are we doing enough to inform the public about our formal complaint process? So that's the lesson learned, we should've had a formal complaint in on the whale inn long, long before, one year, because it was a safety, public safety issue, a, a tragic pu- public safety issue, potentially. So that's, that's why, so a lessons learned agenda item, uh, a static agenda item, I think would be good for us to be able to talk about, uh, opportunities to do a better job if we have an, an example like that.
I agree with you, Steve, uh, but couldn't that come under council comments? And maybe we could add a word to it, uh, uh, static?
Actually, Perry, Perry actually shared with me, uh, that there is, uh, uh, static items on the agenda that just are there all the time for us to comment about, and the lessons learned, uh, item might be appropriate, so I, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I liked, I liked your suggestion.
So it, it could be inserted in several places on the agenda?
Um, well, yeah, by static, when I was talking with Mr. Sparks, um, if you look at your agendas, there's always a call even for order, static, uh, always improvement, static, always accounts payable, static, special orders, static. So, and those are, when you look in your council's reference book, those items that you will always see, I mean, we even list unfinished business if we don't have it. Um, those are the static items that, all right, were identified by the city council in the resolution, um, you know, what you see, uh, it was amended one time to add, I believe it was either special orders or reports aboard, or, or, uh, the reports. Other than that, those are the, uh, the static one, you know, the ones that change all the time are the, the bullet items that we list under those, so, um, that's what Mr. Sparks was suggesting, was we would add it, um, either at the beginning of the, somewhere in, in the static items, lessons learned, and then when a subject comes up, like the complaint process, the awareness of the, the public of the complaint process, who to go to, could be brought up under that. So that's really what we were talking about.
That's exactly right.
If the council would like to do that, um, you know...
We could do better if we have that sort of conversation, one that's appropriate to have it.
Do we need a motion on that, or can we just...
It would be, it would be helpful, because it's, it's like I say, um, you know, this, this is actually in your, um, resolution, it's listed out the items, um, that can be revised.
I'll make a motion that we add lessons learned as a static agenda item.
Wait a second?
Oh, sure, okay.
Any discussion?
I was gonna say, uh... Square. Yeah, I, I like it, uh, I guess, in the, in the, um, towards the end of the discussion, just lessons learned, just seems like it falls at the end of the agenda, you know, in council comments. But I guess, you know, but, uh, I, I, of course, I'd be open to wherever it fell. You know, first, firstly, I don't, no offense to you, but I think it's a great idea, and we should always think about that, and we certainly don't, and I believe, but personally, I think council comments covers that, and many other things that may crop up as well as lessons learned, like the new ideas or something other than new business, you know, maybe council comments, lessons learned, uh, new ideas, and we could go on. Um, I guess I'm kind of the old-fashioned type, I, I like to leave things a little simpler, a little more...
Well, the, 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 the only point that I would, uh, make is that somehow or another, we need to take an action item to make sure that the public is better informed on our formal complaint process, because we shouldn't have folks out there running around town for a whole year complaining about an abandoned building as a safety, uh, public safety issue, and transient issues, and drug issues, and everything in this one building on one-on-one, without the public knowing that they could file a formal complaint right here, and I did it personally, and we got action on it. That's a lesson learned, that I wanna, I wanna see somebody say, okay, let's inform the public about our formal complaint process, maybe it ends up in a, as a news story or something, I don't know. That, that, that was, uh, uh, a, uh, really, uh, a bad mistake on our part to leave that abandoned motel sit there that way for a whole year. Would you agree? It's secure now, it's secure.
Well, not, not...
I watch that place every day, it's, it's secure.
Anyway, that's all I had, I'm, I'm sorry to take up so much time on this.
Yeah, for sure.
On sound.
I have a motion and a second, any more calling in on that? On that item, lessons learned? Call please.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Mattel?
I, uh, since it's, uh, um, a timely item, that won't be on the gin all the time, I'm gonna vote yes.
Yeah, Mina?
No.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
No.
Sparks?
Yes.
Motion passes, okay, we'll add it, um, was mentioned, add it toward the end of the meeting, like right after council conference?
Or before.
Right before?
Yeah, better before.
Either before or with, on the same line, either one, yeah. Comments?
No.
No.
I have none, Jerome?
No, thank you.
Well, it's about twelve minutes until ten, three hours early.
Yeah, well, it's ten minutes less than your last one.